These three, then all the.
Okay.
Someone gave it to them.
Well, I don't know. I know there's some serious business.
It's not 38 during the time.
To serve, so that's.
Yeah.
All right, it's still talking about today. And you said, just, just leave me the offense. We've got about a minute left and so we'll wait until everybody's seated. I did want to say, we really need to take our time today in terms of these oaths to office. Give family and friends an opportunity for pictures, whatever they want to do. Please feel free to interrupt the proceedings of however you would want. Now, this is an ongoing rule from here on out.
Meetings are.
You're a jerk. Well, I'm leaving up here in a second. Push it all the time, please. I'm looking to see if Tracy's gonna get on the line, but it hasn't been yet. Like you guys heard. Are you dressed in our vacation? As soon as Christians don't trip it, we're gonna get. All right, we need to get ready in six oh one. And I called the city council meeting. What is the date? January ninth, twenty twenty four, to order. At this time, we'll call this.
Mayor Ladi.
Here.
Councilman Beccarman.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lillayon.
Here.
Councilmember Bethel. Okay, so is that pronounced?
At this time, we have the optimal pledge of allegiance or moment of silence. Will you stand? In this light, having United States, somebody. And if you recall, the woman who she has managed, one invasion, five million dollars in the vehicle with the Canadian justice. Thank you. I'd like the approval of the agenda. Is there anything we'd like to change? Okay, then I would introduce any motion, please. What was the agenda?
Thomas seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? Any objections? Thank you. All were in favor. Housekeeping matters. Anybody have anything they'd love to talk about before we get rolling?
The led really county region has authority approved the budget last night. And we are sitting at around ninety seven thousand deficit. Hopefully, we'll be able to come up with that money through grants. We're still waiting on their congressional funds that we have had in there about eighty or eight hundred thousand dollars to issue that we applied for and received some good news this morning. Some reassurance that there's a good chance that should go through, so.
Is that through Representative Patterson's office?
Yeah, initially it was both offices, both office across and senate, but ended up just being Representative Patterson.
Yeah, yeah. And I wanted to mention Justin is here, Representative, Representative Patterson, in, in the back corner hiding. At the end of the meeting. For housekeeping matters, I, you guys know how I feel about this, but I want to say in, in party, this has been the honor of my life. I have enjoyed it. Really sincerely have enjoyed it. Maybe not every second of every day, but in general, on balance, I've really enjoyed it. And, and I, I would say, I, I've said this before to the city council, that I've had really good city council, this is a great city council, and you're gonna have some great issues tonight. So I'm very optimistic about the future. Thank you all very much. My next up, we have public comments about items not on the agenda. Mr. Prestash, please. And then Justin, you'll be next.
All right, let's see. Second hand is on. My name is Steve Prestash, one thirty one East Third Street. Well, I, I'm. Well, I would start, usually I try to be prepared. I haven't enjoyed the Mickey Labes of mayorship at all. But I don't have time to go into the details of that. I did mention New Jersey Senator Mendez, US Senator Bob Mendez, at some time in the past, and they revised the indictment to, to a federal indictment that he helped a friend get a million dollar deal with the Tory government and accepting the bribes from the real estate developer. That was in the paper on January third, I'm sorry, on the Davenport paper. And what rally? Okay, that's a man. Hey, Marine. He played friendly jobs. January ninth, that's the day, there was an article in there about Yellen. Treasury Secretary Johnny Allen announced that a hundred thousand, hundred thousand businesses have joined a new database that collects beneficial ownership information on firms as part of a new government effort to unmask shell company owners. And part of the article says, real estate is a model use, a common to use vehicle for money laundering. Yellen said in March two thousand point three, that illicit actors launder at least two point three billion to the US real estate between two thousand fifteen and two thousand twenty. And so I was wondering if we could maybe incorporate this into our city business that somehow people that have corporations and things like that, that buy real estate, that may be fully transparent, who the membership is, and that punitive actions be taken if they don't maintain updated data on this, with us. The other thing is, this is in tandem with what I read before about the beginning of last meeting, about people in Congress, and I'm about two and a half minutes almost. People in Congress, the Democrats, are trying to get a limiting ten year thing on corporations owning single family homes. And I didn't think this was received at all positivity here. I think we need to move progressively in that. And I don't think we should be investing in real estate and trust and things like that with our money because we might be disenfranchising people from becoming property owners because we're investing in corporations that are buying property for investment purposes. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Prestash. All right, Justin, come on up. Maybe also, go ahead. Give it a second. Five, six, five.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, thank you for having me. And I'm glad to see the turnout. First, on behalf of Congressman Brittany Patterson, I'd like to extend our, our thanks to Mayor Ladi. And we're working with us in this recent, in this year, where she's been in office and the rest of the members of the council as well. And then also to congratulate the mayor-elect, Councilman-elect, who brought it here. The council members as well. Congratulations to you all. I want to quickly address the congressional, during the spending work in the House, they call it the community project funding. Where, where the good news comes in is probably what you've seen on these, and that's that there's a framework agreement between the Senate and the House on one point six billion dollar spending framework that will, that we intend to make sure includes the, the community project funds. But I want to also encourage you to point, point out that they, the House Appropriations Committee already approved those measures out of committee back in July, which was one of the largest hurdles of these measures being eventually receiving funding now. There's more to be done in, you know, getting a budget approved by both Congress and then to the president's test. But nonetheless, two major hurdles have been, have been overcome, so. Yeah, to then onto, again, what the, what the office of the Congressman does not only just represent your, your voices in Washington DC, but also provides constituent services, provides liaising between constituents and federal agencies. And we're happy to step into the gap where you have IRS issue or social security or VA issue. There's an agency that has something that you'd like to coordinate or is being held up by, please let us know. Please reach out, as some of the traveling seasons have come under, especially passports have become issues, so please reach out if you have any issues there. But I can, the Congressman has three offices, one in DC, Lakewood, and then I staff the Canyon City office full time, where I'll be heading back this evening, but meanwhile, I'll be here for the, the rest of the meeting. Please, anybody can reach out and ask her as well and get in touch with us when we think, that's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Does anybody else who would like to make comments on topics not on the agenda? Please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mayor-elect, congratulations. This is a pretty cool evening to be involved with tonight, and Mayor Ladi, thank you for your service to the community. So I'd just like to take a moment to give a brief update on our intergovernmental agreement or twenty twenty-three that we engaged with, with the city for mutual aid and law enforcement. Just a quick history, May ninth, twenty twenty-two, I was appointed as the interim sheriff. And at that time, we had three patrol deputies, one in training, and then the addition of myself. And the city police department was also low staffing state, where there was a true, true need for mutual aid. And we would help each other out and recovery shifts, government calls, whatever, to just to make sure we're providing that service. The other aspect of mutual aid is the, just the no coverage aspect. And so what that means is there's just no post-certified law enforcement officer on for either the city or the county. And that was something that we needed to analyze too. So the point of really was to provide an agreement where we provide that mutual aid. But then also use twenty twenty-three to analyze those numbers. So we've been going through that, and producing an official report, I just figured I'd take this opportunity to kind of go over some of those numbers. So initial review, after just checking out the Levee Police Department's schedule, we found that there were one thousand fifty-eight and a half hours in twenty twenty-three, where there was no post-certified police officers, you know, for the city limits. To roughly put a number to this for, for a cost analysis standpoint, we utilized the twenty twenty-three Lake County Extra Duty Service Contract, that equated to approximately sixty-three thousand dollars. And please take into consideration as we're analyzing that for human error on, on the hours covered. So that was just analyzing the schedule to see what was, what we had to fill in the gaps on. And then from our office's standpoint, the reason why I want to review this is we did not request any shift coverage from the Levee Police Department. There was mutual aid though throughout the year. There was one, this request put out, we're doing one of the, these summer events where we helped the Levee Police Department. Other than that, we didn't have any sort of way of tracking the shift schedule. We are, we rely on each other still to this day. We're very grateful to have that mutual aid agreement in place for backup reasons. But where we're starting to see the separation is just in the amount of coverage and availability of the posted by officers. We, we, we both, we're all struggling in the law enforcement world right now. We have multiple issues that we're working through, like low staffing levels, recruitment retention, positive redirection for law enforcement agencies, future planning, and we just continue on with that list. But we, as the sheriff's office, we stopped years ago before we get to that baseline level where we're able to fully provide those services for our community. But over the past twenty months, since my appointment, we have started to finally see some momentum. And we recently wanted an undersheriff, which has taken twenty months to find. But, you know, the patience of the office has endured to find the right person for that position. And it just goes to show that it takes a long time to develop these roles. So my suggestion for twenty twenty-four is that we quickly work out an annual contract that combines city and county efforts to properly equip and pay for qualified employees under the direction of the sheriff's office with open communication between the city and county. We have developed initial, this is, we have developed initial contract that is ready for review. And we would like to accelerate that process so we can come to, to an agreement. The concern is that we are leaving Levee on staffed attorneys. Potential for a dangerous situation simply because of the lack of joint efforts to staff our local law enforcement is looming. We have built a plan at the sheriff's office, and we're braced to carry it out. So there are a lot of details to work and, and cover, but I request that we focus on this project. Whatever it takes, it's weekly meetings, it's sitting down for weeks, pushing everything aside. But it is a true safety concern, not only for the citizens of our city and county, but also for our law enforcement officers. To have only one on it sometimes, it's concerning. I think we need to focus on addressing this concern and coming to an agreement as soon as possible. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all you guys do.
We really do appreciate it.
Anybody else who'd like to speak on item five, please? And if anybody on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand and let us know.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mayor-elect, and City Council members-elect. My name is Tim Burden, and I serve as the chairman manager. This evening, I'm here on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners to discuss their fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, which they adopted earlier this year. The commissioners' priorities for the budget for this year are the development and implementation of an asset management plan, which will actually begin to tackle and, and funding opportunities for decades of deferred maintenance in our community. Community justice, focusing on community justice programmatic work, and also further engagement with the fifty judicial district, the judicial branch, and the state legislature on funding for infrastructure projects for court facilities and jail facilities, economic development such as infrastructure, possibilities for a business park out of the airport, childcare and forest housing for our community. Housing remains a priority for the commissioners. Focus on RHA funding, perhaps further purchasing of unit, units similar to the Elm Street properties to keep those local and keep those affordable. Land making, planning efforts for Harrison Ballfields, that is the county's crown jewel for building and for affordable housing development in the community. And in partnership with the Flat City Conservation Center to address current housing needs and housing stock by bolstering funding and programmatic work that they already do. And then a focus on, continue to focus on organizational development within the county. You can't do any of those things without our great staff and recognizing their hard work and adjusting their salaries and benefits and things accordingly. Today, the county commissioners took the step to be one of the few in Lake County to reduce the mill levy. So they are reducing property taxes to a mill levy of thirty-eight point oh, which were a result in property tax revenues to the county of thirteen point eight million. The county sales tax is at four percent, we estimate five point three million in revenues. Two percent of that sales tax that is collected within the city limits, we committed to the city of Leadville via a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners, leaving out with a total general fund budget of nineteen point seven million. Highlight of that are the community contributions that the commissioners have made over nine hundred thousand dollars to local community groups, ranging from the Tabor Rocker House to the Colorado Central Small Business District, JP Housing Trust, full circle, other local groups. And then using the local assistance and tribal consistency funding that Senator Bennett's office, I believe he was one of the leads on that for rural governments, how you can think of it as akin to additional ARCA funding, but there was nine hundred thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars there. All of that is being dedicated towards community housing, three hundred thousand dollars for a partnership with Colorado Community, Colorado Mountain College to do site planning up at the college for areas on land that CMC owns, where the old dorms used to be, so infrastructure and things should be there, but site planning can move forward. Contributions to Flat City Conservation Center, deed restrictions, and other programmatic housing things. And then the remaining nine, ninety-two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight ARCA funds that are remaining will be dedicated to the Department of Public Services, to both their adult and child wraparound programs to help with transitional housing, stabilizing folks, and then addressing deferred maintenance, deferred maintenance for other clients with higher casework needs and things like that. And it's not solely limited to housing, but vehicle maintenance, other ways that these folks can stay contributing members of the community.
Thank you very much.
This sign is in the way of people speaking.
We try, we try to keep it a little bit light. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to city council? Items not on the agenda, please come up.
Speaking of keeping it light. Deputy Council, six oh one West Seventh Street. Longtime listener, frequent speaker, love your show. Just wanted to come and say thank you, look around the room, and all sorts of you have the tables have helped out and several of you enthusiasts for the annual ski drawing event. But right, just wanted to say one last time, thanks for the last several years and just epic support through COVID times. Standing next to each other as lions, volunteers, it's, it's been a real pleasure dealing with you. Dana, care for what you wish for, look forward to meeting you next year. In good position, success. Briefly, just wanted to say one more time. As ski drawing, thanks for all the support.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak to city council, items not on the agenda? Oh my goodness, thank you guys. Thanks everybody for speaking. At this time, we have presentations which are the votes of office. So I would ask you if Judge Floyd would come up and our mayor-elect, Dana Green, please.
Let's get started. Did you raise your right hand, please? And if you got. I Dana Lynn Green, Lynn Green. I Dana Lynn Green, do solemnly swear by the ever-loving God that I will support. To solemnly swear by the ever-loving God that I will support. The Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado. The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado. And the municipal laws encoded the city of Leadville. And the municipal laws encoded the city of Leadville. And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor. And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor, upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability. Upon which I am about to enter to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
And at this time, we'll allow the new mayor to be seated, and we would ask for Francisco Tharp and Joseph Edwards to come up.
Oh, good job, Greg.
Councilmember that, can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I Joseph Edwards.
I Joseph Edwards.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal laws encoded the city of Leadville.
And the municipal laws encoded the city of Leadville.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
If you get one of these, right? Councilmember Tharp, so please raise your right hand, repeat after me. Hi, Francisco Tharp.
Hi, Francisco Tharp.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal laws encoded the city of Leadville.
And the municipal laws encoded the city of Leadville.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
That's okay. Here, you can sign this one.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hey. Don't go too far, Judge Floyd, because you have so much swearing to do. Leaving. Also, Greg, does this mean I get to inherit all your lifesavers and? All right, we really do have some business to accomplish in this meeting. So next on our agenda is the city administrator's report. Thank you. Our new mayor is correct. That today involves a lot of, lot of swearing. And I, actually, I thought about that, and we have a lot of swearing ins. But this gentleman is the smartest man in the room because he realized that we needed a swearing out. So, Mr. Ladi, you can please come back up here. We're gonna do, we're gonna do one last thing, so I think that there's a, it's appropriate to have a swearing out, and a lot of swearing ins, and so. Dana, you're not the mayor anymore.
That's fact.
Oh, we've been, not that kind of swearing, sorry about that. Not cutting swearing. Will you please raise your right hand? I Greg Lobby.
I Greg Lobby.
Being a sound mind and relatively intact body.
Being a relatively intact mind and relatively intact body.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have faithfully served the city of Leadville.
That I have faithfully served the city of Leadville.
That I have done as much damage as I could.
That I have done as much damage as I could.
In my eight years in office.
In my eight years in office.
That I've enjoyed every minute of my service to this community.
I've done, I've enjoyed almost every minute.
That I will never again cut another ribbon with gigantic scissors.
That I will never again cut another ribbon with gigantic scissors.
That I will never again put together another budget.
That I thankfully will never again put together another budget.
That I will never again crunch on mints throughout an entire city council. That I will never again crunch on mints throughout an entire city council.
Didn't understand.
That I'll never again crunch on mints.
I will never again crunch on mints.
Throughout an entire city council.
Throughout an entire city council.
That I will never again wear that suit that I'm wearing on the city's website.
Wearing that suit that I'm wearing on the city's website.
Okay, that I will faithfully serve the duties of my new office.
That I will faithfully serve the duties of my new office.
Of mayor emeritus.
Of mayor emeritus.
And finally, I swear.
I swear.
To serve and support.
To serve and support.
The city administrator. I owe the mayor a big thank you because he had the vision to establish the office of city administrator. And I think for continuity of government, you know, the county, the same thing. We really appreciate your vision in innumerable ways to better the city. You have big shoes to fill. I've seen it. You are here every day, your dedication to this city. It's a heartfelt thank you from me. So this is just a little we love Leadville and we love you as well.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I would like to piggyback on Ms. Simonson's words and thank you, Greg, for your leadership and your mentorship and you have left some incredibly big shoes to fill. So to really sort of formalize that. I have a proclamation. Come on back. This is a proclamation of the city of Leadville. A proclamation of the city of Leadville, Colorado, recognizing Greg Lobby for his distinguished service to the city of Leadville. Whereas Mr. Lobby has served the city of Leadville in the roles of mayor and city councilman. Whereas Mr. Lobby has dedicated well over a decade of his life in the service of Leadville. Whereas Mr. Lobby has elevated the city of Leadville, the provision of city services and the public image of the city. Therefore, be it resolved that I Dana Green, mayor of Leadville, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the gratitude of the city of Leadville for Greg Lobby's steadfast and clear-sighted leadership. I should have thought of that.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
A combination of combination of a contribution literally from city hall and one of our local artists, Marlo Secker.
It's a slate from the roof.
Yep, correct.
There's, there's, fly this off roof for my car.
Also be careful, the edges can catch you.
Mr. Mayor Greg Lobby in recognition of and deep gratitude for his years of service to the city of Leadville. And so Marlo Secker.
All right. Moving on, action item A. This is resolution, our first resolution of 2024. Our resolution of city council, city of Leadville declaring a vacancy in the office for city council member representing Ward two and filling such vacancy by appointment. Lori, do you want to weigh in on what we've got, sir?
Great, so the background on this is that the Ward two vacancy is to be, and that's where my point, to be or not to be joke, right? Is, was vacant and was up for election in November 2023 and we had no candidates for that particular seat. And so the past practice that the city has been to solicit letters of interest for such vacancy and then appoint someone. The other option is to run a special election. That does cost the city quite a bit of money to do that. So our past practice has been to fill the vacancy by appointment. We have two letters of interest for that seat. One from Mr. Timothy Best and one from Ms. Shannon Grant. And I believe that when one matter of housekeeping business, as we, Mr. Grant's letter did not address the two qualifications, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Best. His letter of interest did not address the two qualifications, so we should just clarify on the record that he is, has been a resident of the city of Leadville for at least a year and he's a registered voter in the city of Leadville. So do we want to? Okay, so we should just have him confirm that on the record.
Okay.
And I do believe that he said he was going to be here.
He is, you are here.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Grant is here and they, I mean, I think at your discretion, Mayor, Nate both wanted to say a few words.
Absolutely. I think we all want to hear from them. So let's, let's start, Mr. Best, if you would come up to the podium and tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. So I moved to Leadville in 2016 primarily to pursue the mountain lifestyle, as a lot of people I know do here, and was unprepared for the richness of the life that I found here, primarily in working with Leadville's kids. So I started running an after-school program at West Park Elementary School, did that for many years. And while I was also directing Rocky's Rock Summer Camp under Cisco and then later replacing Cisco as camp administrator and youth director for Get Outdoors Leadville. In doing so, I developed relationships with a great many families here in town and I feel invested in their futures. And I am interested in having a voice in some of the decisions facing the struggles of those families here in Leadville. Those included housing for the kids and the youth of Leadville, employment and recreation. A lot of the kids that I've worked with since kindergarten are now entering seventh, eighth grade. And there's a dearth of opportunities for them here and I would like to, to be a part of that solution. I have a strong mind for logistics and problem solving. I have a background in business as I started my own sort of coffee shop many, many years ago before the Starbucks boom and I've run other small businesses. I excel in collaborative environments and would love the opportunity to serve on the council with you all.
And for the record, would you please clarify your residence status, where you live and how, what your voter, where you're registered to vote?
Yes, I'm registered to vote here in Leadville Lake County. And I live just down the street on Harrison at the light.
And how long have you lived there?
Well, I've lived in that particular spot for four years, but I live in Leadville for a few.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Grant.
What else can I say? I'm, I'm sorry for a weaker voice tonight, but I just wanted to, to ask to be reappointed. I've served on to be council for about eighteen months now. And I know that when I submitted my letter of interest, it was rather brief. I was trying to make sure that I got it submitted in time. And always the best intentions to go back and to provide some more information. I'm happy to answer any questions or just to provide more information about my continued interest going into the summer, into the fall, I wasn't sure. But as we have had quite a slate of issues on our agendas, I feel compelled to stand here and to make sure that my voice and my voice for Ward two is heard and continue to be heard. I know that I haven't always been in last step as the council and I actually think that's healthy. I think it's good to have differing views, differing opinions and hope that, as I've always intended, that that comes across respectful and thoughtful. I do spend a lot of time being prepared for city council meetings, reviewing agenda, reviewing the documents and I think that's important and would like to continue my work here with you. Can I answer any question?
And I didn't ask, but are there any council questions for Mr. Best? Ms. Shear, I think at this point we need to, well, yeah.
And then we have everyone write their book down.
Yes. But councilmember Tharp has generously noted that the seat he previously occupied in the audience is open, so for anyone standing, please use it.
I didn't know I should write all this stuff with me. And what do we write on?
The name of who you would like to appoint for Ward two.
Do we write all of them?
To be, no, this was anonymous voting, correct?
For, we can do, if you write your name, I'll keep it anonymous, but just so we have it for our private record.
Very good.
One vote for Ms. Grant. One vote for Ms. Grant, two votes. Three votes for Ms. Grant. One vote for Mr. Best. Two votes for Mr. Best. And three votes for Mr. Best. So that ended tie. What do we do?
We do have our city attorney, Ms. Graham, is here and so we have not encountered this before. What, do you know what we do when the city council tied on a vote? Now, I know if it's a motion or a resolution, a tie vote is a no, however.
So you haven't appointed anybody successfully. You can call for a vote again, do again if you're interested in seeing if people might change their minds. You could ask the applicants to come up and speak again. If you feel like that's futile, then I don't know. I'm also at a bit of a loss.
Leave it to the first day.
I mean, I, I, we're not the first city that's encountered this issue in general. So if you all follow the city of Aurora for a number of years, about a year, they were tied in a vote to do the same thing, appoint the new city council member. And so that exactly, you know, our city attorney presented what they had tried is they essentially tried to vote again and to see if there was any difference in any of the voting. And essentially, they, they tried a number of times and were still deadlocked, but that was the approach they, they took. So I don't think it would be a bad idea. I think if we they, they tried to vote multiple different meetings, so we can try a vote again at this meeting tonight, if you so choose. Or I, you know, because the, both the applicants are here, I think it would, it would hurt. Or we can have a vote again at a different meeting, but then unfortunately, we would run the risk of having a tie. I mean, the reason you have an odd number of members is so that future votes, you're not potentially at risk of a tie.
It's also possible that if you were interested, you could open up letters of interest again and get a, a third candidate who might garner more support. So that would be an option as well.
I'm wondering if it would be useful to ask the candidates to supply, supply some letters of recommendation or support from the community and then revote next meeting.
Right, the only risk you run on that is that we do have, I mean, well, yes, you can do that, you could do that.
So the deadline, as, as was noted, is sixty days from the date of declaration of the vacancy. So that, and that's before that time, there needs to be an appointment or a special election as required.
I think we're well within sixty days.
Right, so the, the resolution this evening is declaring the vacancy and then filling the seats. So what you could do tonight is just the portion that declares the vacancy and not fill the vacancy by appointment. I, I don't know, I, if you want a recommendation from staff, I suggest that we at least try another vote this evening since the applicants are both here. And if you wanted to hear from them additionally, just to see if that changed any, if anybody had a question, it may be worth doing. Well, everyone's here.
What other input? Does council have? On this novel situation?
I would solicit whether to submit to them. Vote in a couple weeks. What do we next week?
Well, so our next, right, our next meeting is next Tuesday.
Yeah. We, I mean, would the candidates feel like that's too tight of a ship? No, no.
Are you, are you asking for us to remember letters of recommendation? I guess what I'm looking for, at, at least from my own curiosity, is what other, you know, support, supporting input can we gather that would better inform the council on a revote? But I think perhaps since we're all here, I mean, just to answer the question, if we revote right now and if that ends up a tie again, then maybe proceed with additional solicitation of letters of interest and letters of support.
Well, there's, that's two separate things.
Yes.
So you're opening it back up to the community for people to say they're interested in that seat?
So councilmember Hill is suggesting reissuing letters of interest or resubmitting letters of interest. Anybody else?
But when we wouldn't be long enough to do that, so we'd have to postpone beyond that.
Yeah.
Right, so for the letters of interest, we ran the ads in the newspaper, which the lead-up time for that is quite, would push that out. uh, would push that out a little bit longer. So what we did is we ran in the paper, uh, what is today? Tuesdays. We've already missed this Thursday's paper, so we would, it would be in the, if we get it in for next Thursday, and then we, I think we gave the candidates
Two weeks.
Or something. So we gave the candidates time, so that pushes it out. You know, if you want to give them, get, open it up for two more weeks, that pushes it out for at least three weeks before we would even have it back before council for consideration.
I guess I'll say, I, for one, I'm fine with the two candidates we have, um, and I could be convinced one way or another. So I'm open to it just being these two candidates with just the more information to vote on, as you said.
Would you, I do think pushing it out that far would push us close to the sixty day limit to from when we initially announced it. Um, council member Luna, they have the specific questions or things that you'd like to hear from the?
Um, I mean, you know, just general thoughts of um, where people stand on housing. Obviously, that's where my focus is and my expertise is. Um, and really getting a good understanding of where everyone is landing on that obviously will help me feel more informed on uh, how to vote one way or another, but um, it, I guess I'm open to hearing more um, stuff like that, um, that could change my mind one way or another.
Then I would suggest this, if both candidates would come up and have some commentary on their positions or how they feel about housing or some of the projects that are underway to um, increase housing in Leadville, that would be helpful. And then if there are any other questions, we should have one more vote and we'll just proceed accordingly. So everyone in agreement with that? Okay. Well, Mr. Best, please. Regale us again.
Sure. Um, definitely feel free to ask me very, very specific questions about where I stand on these issues, but related to housing specifically, since you brought that up. Um, it troubles me that the working people of uh, Leadville can't afford to live here increasingly and are working over, you know, in Sonoma County, Greco County, in order to pay their rent here and can barely do that. Um, increasingly, as a renter myself, this has become a problem for me personally. I thought of seeking employment elsewhere because I can increasingly not afford to work here. So I, I am open to any solution. Certainly, public funded solutions are sort of where I tend to land on. You know, um, workforce housing as the county is sort of turn initiated and solutions like that, but um, definitely open to ideas and, and um, as I said, I'm really good at probably logistics and um, figuring out complicated problems like that. Is there another specific issue you'd like me to address about where I stand?
Are there other questions?
I have a question for both, but do you want to give um, Miss Grant a chance first or should I ask?
I.
Go ahead of that, whatever you do.
I kind of think it'd be smoother if we just did one and then the other.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm curious what uh, your top three priorities would be for Leadville.
Certainly, housing is number one. Um, I would love to see Leadville grow, but grow in the right way, in a way that remains affordable for locals and allows them to proffer while maybe containing the sort of resorty um, development that is so characteristic of other places that makes Leadville so unique that we haven't had that here. Um, and then, as I said, uh, I would also love for the, the youth that I've worked with to remain here and have opportunities here to build Leadville from within. Uh, and that means uh, employment opportunities, but it also means uh, more lifestyle opportunities, um, which includes businesses, uh, places to work, places to play. Um, and sort of that sort of development targeted at, you know, building the, from within with the local community that remain here as they become parents of their own.
I have a, uh, if there's no other questions, just a hypothetical. This is not a thing right now, but what are your feelings on the idea of the city purchasing land for housing development?
Um, like I said, I'm very inclined towards public solutions and public funded solutions. So not having delved tremendously into the issue, I, my reflexes to be for that, to be for Leadville investing in workforce housing and purchasing land in order to develop workforce housing. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sold on the issue because in, in effect, uh, Leadville just becomes a landlord and it doesn't necessarily solve the problem. Um, I think there needs to be a range of solutions. Including um, caps on short-term rentals or taxes on short-term rentals, which I'm concerned about as well, uh, things like that.
Thank you. All right, that's great. If you would please begin with your general comments on housing.
So, um, I also am concerned about housing, uh, the situation for the city of Leadville and the county. As you want to know, I was also interested in your seat on uh, the um, uh, housing authority board as well, because I feel like it's important. Um, I am grateful for the work that you've done, that others have done on that, and I am so grateful for the work that Jackie has put into that along with the other entities involved. I think that covers that.
The newer.
And then my three areas. So I'm, I'm glad that you asked that question. I think that, that's, as I was saying, driving home today, that's what I was thinking about. I think that I'm short from, and, and maybe not in this particular order, but these are the, the areas I'm concerned. But I think we need to be aware of short-term rentals as it relates to housing and uh, making sure that we are utilizing the housing stock that we have in the city uh, to the best of our abilities, to the best of our, uh, of what we can do with that. I think our police department and the intergovernmental agreement uh, to provide coverage uh, is important, but I also believe that it's important to maintain a police department and not to uh, not to uh, into, melt into uh, having a link to share exodus for. I also admit that um, I, I know, um, this is for those, now that I've been in the council for a little while, so it's important to me. Um, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, that, um, sign, uh, signage is important. One, because it uh, is important in how we look as a city. It needs to be uh, important that our guests and then our community can apply the signage. So I would list those three, maybe not in that order, but it's the three focuses.
And finally, my hypothetical question about the city purchasing land specifically for housing development.
So I, um, my impulse, thank you, I appreciate your, your saying, my impulse is to say that we keep doing what we're doing and partnering with the entities, uh, being county, utilizing the housing authority, utilizing Aurora and uh, making sure that we are aware of what else everybody else is doing, so that we're not doing what they are not being redundant with what we do and that we're providing the best for the Midmore.
Thank you so much.
I think that's it.
Ms. Shear, do we have enough paper?
No. Yes.
Just cross out the ones.
Council, at the risk of disrupting things, I want to well, okay, never mind.
Are you sure? This is probably a key time to come forth with legal advice.
No, I, I'll, I'll stay out of it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. One vote for Mr. Best. One vote for Miss Grant. Two votes for Miss Grant. Three votes for Miss Grant. Two votes for Mr. Best. And three votes for Mr. Best.
So what I would propose then at this time, um, is that both of the interested parties, please in the next week, submit letters of recommendation from people who know you, who can speak for you, um, to you?
Yes.
To city administrator. Um, and we will do this again on the nineteenth.
Uh, one procedural question, and I think that uh, we can do this a couple of ways, but I'd like to hear from our city attorney if we should declare the vacancy tonight because it, the uh, seat is in fact vacant, or do we, can we wait until next week?
I, I think it would be best to declare it tonight. It's, it's gonna be pretty hard to say that it's not vacant when the other seats were sworn in. So.
All right, so. All right. And number Luna Lial is going to take a stab at the motion.
Luna then moves to adopt resolution, I guess we can call for a motion.
You're in it. Let's do it.
Luna then moves to adopt resolution number one, series of twenty twenty-four, the resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville, Colorado, declaring a vacancy in office for a city council member representing Ward QB.
For the second?
All right, Thomas seconds.
Roll call, please.
All right, Mary Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Thark?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember of the way up?
Yes.
Councilmember Earl?
Yes.
And Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
All right.
Clear a frank question about the letters of support. Do you wish for those to be from Ward Two or can they be from general city? In the city, that is important?
My own inclination is that at this point, the recommendation letters can come from anywhere or, or from anyone who can speak to your qualities, your intents, and, you know, what you might bring to council. What do you guys think?
I agree.
And you wish for them to come directly from that person or can they come through your need to?
I think that's fine.
I just wanted to make sure.
Whatever delivery method you find useful. All right. Wow, I'm, uh, I'm sorry. I, we scared off a bunch of people because I, I put out this like, this can be really smooth, easy, straightforward meeting, done like that. It will go much smoother from here, I know. So thank you too for your interest. We will see you again in a week. Now we're moving on to resolution number two. Uh, series of twenty twenty-four. This is a resolution in the city council, uh, appointing the city treasurer. All right?
Great. Thank you. So uh, the city, in addition to the mayor and city council, we have other elected positions. Uh, that is the city treasurer and city clerk. And uh, that, those seats were also up for uh, elections in November of twenty twenty-three, and we did not have any candidates for those seats. And uh, the both of those positions all summer as it together are in fact, um, elected positions and those positions. Majority of those duties are performed, in this case, for the city treasurer by our deputy city treasurer slash finance director, in the case of city clerk, our deputy city clerk. And so, um, one of the thing, questions that we had is, um, would it be possible for um, the city to appoint for the city treasurer, the finance director and the city clerk, our deputy city clerk, to uh, alleviate some of the confusion? Because I in fact had confusion about why we have those different positions when I was looking at the city. And so our city attorneys advised that there is not a conflict of interest in the finance director being the appointed city treasurer and the deputy city clerk being the appointed city clerk. We did put out the same request for letters of interest for both of those, and we ran those out in the papers, you saw. They've gone December seven, fourteen, and twenty-one. Uh, we've received for the city treasurer position, one letter of interest from our current finance director, Miss Crystal Hewitt. And I can tell you more about the one when we get to the city clerk, but we have one letter of interest for the position of city treasurer and um, we are filling that also by appointment rather than running another special election.
And then these positions will be up for election again in two years or is it four year?
So I believe we put those on a two-year cycle to get them back on track. Uh, I will.
That's correct. So the appointment can only be until the next regular election?
Okay. Okay, great. Questions from council on this procedural issue? And I would entertain a motion.
I'm going to adopt resolution two, series of point twenty-four. Resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville, appointing Miss Crystal Hewitt as the city treasurer. Two seconds.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Mary Jane?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Thark?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Luna Lial?
Yes.
Great. Um, congratulations. And I believe I asked this earlier today. We do need to swear that position in as well, so there's still more swearing. Don't go away. Um, we have our judge here. If you wanna. Yes, I think if that's okay with you. If you have any things. I have just the view.
You swear only by the living God?
I swear by the living God.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the, of the United States?
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city treasurer.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the city treasurer.
Upon which I'm about to enter, upon which I'm about to enter to the best my, to the best my. Thank you so much. Next, we have resolution number three. This is an analogous resolution to the last, a resolution in city council, appointing the city clerk.
Uh, that is correct. So the same circumstances are in play, that we have the elected position, we had no candidates, we solicited letters of interest. We received one from our deputy city clerk Hannah Shear. And so, uh, that is where we are. Trying to keep it brief.
Yeah. Questions about this particular resolution? All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Luna then moves to adopt resolution number three, series of twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville, appointing Miss Hannah Shear as city clerk, as the city clerk.
Third seconds.
Roll call, please.
Who seconded?
Who seconded? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Huh?
Yes.
Councilmember Lila?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lila?
Yes.
Alright, congratulations.
Let me get my bridge.
And you know, we got crafty on the resolutions, and the ones before this, she was deputy city clerk, and this one, and her.
Clerk Supreme.
Thank you. Raise right here. I, Hannah Shear?
I, Hannah Shear.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I, that I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city clerk.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the deputy city, or the city clerk.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
For us, I just want to make sure that I'm not losing hers when I'm in the school.
I think that's the next. No, no, that's not.
Alright, we can ride along. Resolution number four, this is the resolution of the city council reappointing the city attorney and municipal judge.
Great, so our city attorney was very careful in reading our code, and so under section 212010, each new city council on taking office needs to elect and appoint one city attorney, one municipal judge, and at least one alternate municipal judge. And so previously, we have appointed Ms. Chris Floyd as the municipal judge, and we had not had an alternate. And so we have therefore proposed Mr. John Scott and Mr. Ron Carlson both as alternates. They are both willing and able to serve and qualified to serve as alternate judges. And so we also previously appointed Ms. Haley Graham and her law firm as our city attorneys. And so these are reappointments of Ms. Graham and Ms. Floyd, and then the new appointment of Mr. Scott and Mr. Carlson.
Does that all need to be in the motion?
Nope, you can, I, I understand that it, the phrasing, I think as long as you cite the resolution number, and, and we usually put some phrasing, and so I think the way that the motion is written in your staff report is sufficient.
So do we, do we have to add to the proposed motion though, because it appoints the city attorney and municipal judge? To add the appointment of the alternate?
You can't, I, I, you're adopting the resolution and the resolution specifies that.
Okay.
So I, I tried to make it not as complicated to read, but.
I had the same.
Alright, so with that, a bit, a bit of freedom, then I'll make a motion. Okay, let me do it. Tom has moved to adopt resolution number four, series of 2024, a resolution of the city council in the city of Leadville, reappointing the city attorney and municipal judge.
Luna then seconds.
Roll call please. Councilmember Huh?
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Lila?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor Green?
Yes.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Yes. Is there any swearing that needs to happen?
Yes, yes, there's always swearing. So yes, well, so.
Yeah.
No, well, no. Right, exactly. Yes, yes, yes.
Do I have a description?
Oh, you don't have one? Oh, I think I have that one. Let me find it. So.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do that? And we can.
Well, can you give some facts? This is my man for, Mr. Stappers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, let's go ahead. So I, I, let me, have you take a look at this one?
So we didn't, is, okay, does it sound fun? Yes, well, can we just modify this and have that be for, have Dana do that for you? And yeah, and just take that as the first, I would be presiding since we have an alternate now.
Yeah.
Will that work?
Yeah, okay. So and then sort of the paper, yep, let's, you, you wanna do? The one that you use? Yeah, let's do that. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I can alter this either which way, these are the.
This way.
Okay.
Oh, I see. Good.
So the only thing for this is just, that's his crew size.
Oh, good.
I thought I said that. No. Let me, I, Chris Floyd?
I, Chris Floyd.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I support the constitution and laws of the United States.
The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And will faithfully perform the duties.
And will faithfully, go ahead.
Will faithfully perform the duties of presiding municipal judge.
And will faithfully perform the duties of presiding municipal judge.
Upon which I am about to enter, upon which I am about to enter, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
We'll, we'll fix that tomorrow.
Do you have that memorized by now?
Oh, yeah, we should have asked. And you are in the resolution, yes. Before we start though, I want to clarify for those who may know General County Judge Scott, who is becoming a judge in the municipal, which is allowed by Colorado laws as well. So I'm very honored to have him on board as my highway minister as well. I, John Scott?
I, John Scott.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And will faithfully perform the duties of alternate municipal judge.
And will faithfully perform the duties of alternate municipal judge.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And then there's nothing further to do for the attorney, that's simply an appointment, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, well, let me just, I, Ms. Graham, we don't, there's no swearing in for the attorney, correct?
I don't believe so. I mean, you certainly could, I wouldn't be opposed to swearing, but I think, I think we're fine as is.
I don't think we've previously sworn in our.
We've, we've had so much swearing this meeting, I think we've had enough. Let's move on then to our final resolution, resolution five. This is a resolution designating the official public office, the public notice location and official newspaper of general circulation for the city of Leadville.
Alright, so this needs to happen at the first meeting of every year, and I'm glad that Mr. Bylow is here from the newspaper, because we're actually gonna have to swear you in. So this, this is essentially what we do every year. We need to designate our posting location for notices for public meetings, that includes city council meetings, commission meetings. And so we have designated that on the front door of city hall, the city's website, and the Leadville Herald.
Okay, questions about this standard thing? Okay, I will entertain a motion in that case. I want to move to adopt resolution five, series of 2024, a resolution designating the official public notice of place and the official newspaper of general circulation for the city of Leadville. Alright, do a call please.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Lila?
Yes.
Councilmember Huh?
Okay, that brings us to the end of our action items. Let's move on to public comments. Steve?
Alright, my name is Steve Creston, I took the fourth. And okay, one of the previous meetings I thought about, and there are organizations called Elevation Quotient. And this is about the semiconductor industry and how Leadville could interact with some of that. An earlier speaker said something about $1.62 million issue, I think. But in the January Friday fifth paper, once again, there is $162 million the Biden administration has provided to microchip technology, and that was $90 million to plan in Colorado Springs. There was another article in the Denver paper on January 3rd that talked about a semiconductor factory in, or concern rather, in Britain. And in the countryside of Anjershire, a British semiconductor startup was ready to expand beyond its lab and open manufacturing base. But they said there was a problem with electrical service, weekly manufacturing capability from tens of thousands of devices to millions. But they probably had a problem with availability for electricity. So we've, I've noticed in Leadville, it's lasted twenty years. We have electrical outages, and I was hoping maybe we could give some attention to why we have those every so often. I know one time a transformer blew up, I think that's what it was. And there's another article in the Denver paper that talked about, and this is January 5th, where should substations go, location of new electrical substations which convert high voltage electricity to power for homes and businesses? So if anybody becomes serious about trying to port the enormous amount of money that I ordered in the last article I read, the last time I was here, about quantum electric or quantum elevator that the federal government's gonna be making available. I think we need to have this infrastructure for this electricity to be available for such a concern. So hopefully there'll be some kind of interest, I mean, this would be an industry that would be probably employ quite a few people. Okay, thank you, Brian, the button.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself and tell us where you live. Please introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
My name's Quinn Morrison, and I live on 13 Ken Harrison. I've been a resident of Leadville for fifty years. I'd just love to say, oh, residents of Leadville, hello, I'm Quinn Morrison, good evening to you all here. First of all, I would like to congratulate in person Mayor-elect Dana Green. Dana, you ran a nice clean election, good job, you showed much effect for the other candidates. I wrote the Herald Democrat opinions here seven months ago and said that, quote, "Leadville and Lake County elections have become a popularity contest," unquote. Like back at the old school when we voted for class president, remember? Anyway, the most popular person I was more than not the most qualified. So I suggested that we citizens vote for the most qualified person and study where all three candidates stood on all the issues. I also recommended to please elect qualified people or qualify some people to elect. And I myself, I studied all the responses in the newspaper from the other, from all the candidates and on the issues and their priorities in order were to make Leadville better for all residents or wealthy. Dana Green and I agree on issues about 93%. Thank you, Dana. I, I'm looking forward to working with you, Dana.
Thank you, sir.
I'm excited like you are, Dana, about you being mayor. You wrote in the paper that you were excited. I'm excited for everybody here because you're the mayor.
Thank you, sir.
The issues, so I recommended to the paper, the Patrick Harris, that the good people in Leadville elect Dana Green, and it was so close that there was a recount. Thanks for those eight or so votes that ate Dana to victory. I'll be happy to be like, I got three pages, but cut me off.
About room minutes, sir.
To make, I think Dana, you'll make a big difference here, because I do believe that you, Dana, care about all of us, all of us citizens in Leadville. Dana, you're very qualified, qualified, you're capable and very competent to ensure and continue the quality of life for us, all of us here in Leadville, in a two-mile city. I hope you turn the mayor's office back into a strong mayor system and fully take charge, Dana, you're the boss. I ask all residents at this time to firmly stand with you, Dana, and back you up and give you all the support and all your resources to reserve our heritage, quality of life, and create jobs, new jobs and opportunities, so our children and our working people can live here. Their, and their families, and all single mothers, their families, the elderly. In order to create affordable housing here, Dana, for all the residents rich and poor, we must create jobs here first to attract investors and developers. I have many good ideas on how to create these jobs.
Mr. Morrison, I appreciate your words. I said, I appreciate your words, and you've had three minutes. I'll afford to meet with you too.
Can I do one more, Dana?
But you can come in my office and meet with me.
Thank you, I just wanted to congratulate you, and I'm really, really looking forward to you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Hey y'all, Luke, thank him, 408 West 7th Street. Mayor, city council, I'd like to take this time to thank you for your service to Leadville. Mayor Green, congratulations on your recent electoral win. To city council, congratulations to all of you who ran and were elected. I appreciate y'all's willingness to serve our community. To the other folks who ran, Steve, Mike, and others, thank you for running your dedication, your decision to run made a difference in our elections this year. City council, I hope that with the recent oaths that you have taken and the city members sitting there reflecting on their own vows, you will continue to keep Leadville and her full-time residents in the forefront of your hearts and decisions. Leadville is one of the last working-class communities in this mountain region. We consistently see regular folks being pushed, priced out of neighboring communities, and a fair amount are landing in Leadville. The major issue on everyone's mind, can Leadville remain Leadville? Residents continue to voice that they don't want Leadville to become fatal or gasping. One of the main objectives in this group is to work toward the goal of keeping Leadville affordable, beautiful, rustic, and quote, a blast from the past, if you will. Can development and affordable housing exist together? I believe they can, and I encourage you to find a way where the proposed developments don't treat affordable housing as a side of a, back-of-the-bus mindset for most of the undesirable landscapes for our locals. Finally, as Mr. Labey left, he did a great job with the helm. He took all the good and the bad in stride. He, what always stood out to me was his willingness to admit. He, what always stood out to me was his willingness to admit his mistakes, take blame, and be open to new opportunities. And I have, and, and to be able to have his mind changed, uh, for possible better ideas. I think that comes from being a business owner, knowing when to admit defeat, look for new solutions, and move forward while vowing only to make new mistakes. This type of attitude has benefited the city and her residents. Uh, the mayor was a friend to Leadville locals, a vocal and engaged mayor, a person who we could all expect to see at community events. Not just a man who spoke to his heart like motorbiking. Events he knew that were community oriented deserved the full support of the mayor's office. The dedication to the community is admirable. And I'm happy that people continue to volunteer and share his knowledge that he has amassed over the last eight years. Lastly, I thank, uh, Mr. Labbe and the city council for the work with the Irish miners from Mora. Your help and leadership from the city's perspective was invaluable. I was often very struck by the willingness of Mayor Labbe to travel to Alleghys Island to seal that bond that has been long abandoned or forgotten. By taking that skip across the pond, he's brought home those names to the families who have longed to know the destiny of their relatives. Perhaps there is someone on city council who could facilitate a tour to Alleghys? This show of solidarity will continue to increase the affectance of both towns toward each other and will continue us on a trajectory toward economic, cultural, and educational brotherhood. Thank you again so much for your time, and best of luck to you all this next term.
Thank you, I would think. Further public comment? Anyone online? Okay. Let's wrap this thing up. Mayor's report, I have one thing, and that is one of our other duties next meeting is for y'all to appoint a mayor pro temp. Um, and so I just wanted to put that bug in your ear right now. I am already a different mayor than Mayor Labbe. I have actually a part-time, very part-time job. And I will be relying on a mayor pro temp more, um, more frequently than Mayor Labbe, uh, relied on me. This would be aligning our schedules to make sure that somebody is available to sign checks when I'm out of town and occasionally run a meeting if I am out of town. Or if I have to, uh, tend remotely, it may be easier to have a physical person who run it. So keeping those items in mind, I would like you all over the next week to discuss amongst yourselves and be ready to, um, ready to nominate, uh, pro temp next meeting. That's all. Council members.
Um, as mentioned earlier, you have to keep paying, uh, with our budget, um, with some slight deficit, um, a little bit better than what we expected to be, quite honest. We're still, uh, moving forward with some of the, um, help that Antonella and her consulting team is putting on for us to really set a strong foundation. We had a really good discussion last night as to what that looks like. Um, and really just tackling the differences, the fundamental differences because there are just some fundamental differences between board members and what we feel that the group should be doing. So, uh, so you all are aware, there are some issues that, um, at play because of that, but none that are like, none that aren't solvable, so to say. Um, so we're working all, um, through our differences to hopefully set a solid foundation for the group. And hopefully be able to, um, you know, make sure that the regional housing authority is successful well beyond just this one dollar grant. I think it's incredibly important that we focus on that foundation. It took a long time to get our vision and mission, mission statements passed. But that's incredibly important for us to be able to set that foundation for, um, whoever's to come next, um, in those positions, so that they have easy sailing and not just, you know, recreating the wheel, um, so, uh, you know, I am pretty proud of the group to be able to, you know, sit down and really dial it back a bit on certain issues and of course continue ramping up for other issues such as getting to work on housing directly. So, uh, in that sense, I'm happy to answer the questions directly about, um, what those differences are and how they can impact anything.
Yeah. Any reports? I can talk very briefly about the EDC. I volunteered to take on, um, council member's sole position on the EDC. I've met with Tamra a few times. Uh, and as you may know, the EDC has been working for the last many months, probably ten or eleven months, seating a new board. And they're looking at changing their bylaws, creating a steering committee. And their stated desire moving forward is to no longer have a rep, an elected representative on the EDC, but rather, uh, city administrator for, to create continuity. So I think that's something the city will have to consider in terms of Lori's time.
Right, so they're, they're reconstituting, and so the, there would not be, uh, elected member on the board, but the city administrator would be on a steering committee. And so I have asked some questions about how that plays out. And I would like to see sort of in their bylaws, the way that works. But that's the, they're going to have a meeting on the eighteenth.
Okay. January eighteenth. I'm interested to hear how that shakes out. That's all. Anyone else?
Uh, just to add to the regional housing authorities, um, is that I think we decided that we would like to, um, make a quarterly presentation to council about what is going on or the housing authority and get some input. We'll put that on the agenda every quarter as a discussion item. Just hope you can buy input of the whole council.
That sounds like a great idea. Intercolate that into our agenda schedule.
Yes, I will tell you that the, we just had a agenda discussion meeting this afternoon, and the, the January sixteenth meeting is looking very full. So it would, it'd be okay if we looked at that, uh, at the February sixth meeting?
Yeah, uh, you know, we just had a recent discussion, of course, um, a lot of us were there, some of the newer members, but, um, I think that would be appropriate since we just had that discussion, um, with Grayson and the facility group with both the county and the city president. So I think if you wanna push it down a bit, I think that should be fine for this first quarter. Uh, hopefully at the beginning of the next quarters.
All right, other reports? Anyone else? All right, then, last thing, the public meetings planner. Which looks a little bit odd this month because we have a meeting the second Tuesday of the month, which is a little unusual for us, followed by our regular meeting next week. What's missing, I think, on here is our training, the work session training.
Oh, yes, and I, uh, right, so our, there will be two trainings for city council members. And the first one will be on January twenty-third. I think I've sent you all an email and a calendar invite, but if you don't have access to your emails yet, uh, the one on the twenty-third will be here at six P M. and will be with our, uh, city attorney team. Um, or at least, uh, Ms. Graham and Ms. Lobon. And then the second one will be, uh, I did confirm that with Sam Light, who is the general counsel for Sursa, who is our insurance company. He has come in the past, not last year, but has come in the past and does actually a, a complimentary training. And so I've asked our city attorney to sit in on that one as well. And, uh, if you haven't received the calendar invite for that one, I will send that one out as well. And trying to pull up my calendar, that is February. Hold on a second.
It's the thirteenth, Tuesday.
Okay, yeah. Lucky thirteenth. Great, yeah, uh, that's correct, the thirteenth at six P M. here.
Okay. I have found these trainings to be incredibly helpful in the past, so I'm pretty bold to know again.
Right, so they're great refreshers for new council members. It's great. You may hear some similar, you know, things from all. Uh, but it's, it's a lot of places, jurisdictions do it every year. So it's a reminder about open meetings, open records, your duties, obligations, things to do, things to not do. So I think it's great training as well.
All right, the last thing, uh, on this month is Fat Bike World, coming the last weekend of January. This is a big deal.
Yeah, it's got some fantastic press. Uh, they, I think they were being interviewed by the Denver Channel. And, uh, there's actually, we received a request for a film permit. There's gonna be a company up here, um, filming some of it. And so it's, and filming Leadville itself, so.
And this does not involve a health actor, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big one. All right. Wow, well, I really appreciate everyone's attendance tonight. If we could, if you could just talk to your friends, if we could get this kind of attendance with every meeting, that would be amazing. And it would help us a lot with our decision-making. So thank you for your, for your time and the presence. I, I have one addition to the agenda. Do we have a special permission?
We gave ourselves a permit, Stephanie. So if everyone can stick around, you're choosing, you have.
Then I am going to adjourn the formal part of this meeting. Seven thirty-nine.
Uh, Mr. Hill, Councilmember Hill? Did it do it?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Oh, there you go, okay.
Good, there's meeting. I didn't, you know, I was never a waitress because I don't like to.
Congratulations. Very shaky.
You're still doing it?
What's up?
You're still going strong, Nancy? We've got a lot of things going for us right now, but some big, big obstacles on the horizon.
Can I, um?